I'll call the meeting of the town council to order. Could we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we begin the meeting, I'd ask us to take a moment of silence for those in the community we've lost, especially Mr. Felton Perkins. Mr. Perkins served in combat operations with the 330th Combat Engineer Regiment, United States Army Asiatic Pacific Theater of Operations, China Burma India campaigns during World War II. And as many people know, his great-grandfather founded the Henry Perkins Company in Bridgewater in 1846, and Mr. Perkins worked there for over 59 years prior to his retirement. And as also many people know, he was an active participant in town affairs and always tried to look out for the best interests of Bridgewater throughout his lifetime. And we're very saddened upon his passing, and if you could take a moment of silence for him and everybody else. Thank you. Prove of minutes from the previous meetings, June 6, 2017. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Made by Mrs. Loesch, seconded by Mr. Souza. Mr. Gallagher will abstain. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
One abstention.
Okay. Moving on, announcements from the President. We do have the Fourth of July Parade and Festival coming up. Reach out to Jeff Fowler. He'll tell you all the information, but it'll be a good time and great fireworks. And certainly thank the Fourth of July Committee for putting together a great show, as they always do. There are no proclamations. Citizens open forum. Mr. Candido, step up to the microphone and identify yourself. Thank you.
Jim Candido, 37 Stetson Street in Bridgewater. Let me just read over a few notes. This is just a follow-up from attending these meetings on a monthly basis since February. I'm here again to try and get these issues completed. It seems to me that the process is broken. This is not rocket science, but just common sense. It has been mentioned by prior council presidents as to why these chairs are not always occupied. And my findings is a lack of indecisions on the council's part and no action to validate requests and lack of response to residents. That's just my comment. I finally received a letter from Mr. Dutton dated June 7, and at the urging of the President, Mr. Fitzgibbons, at the last meeting I attended. The response was just an acknowledgement of receipt, some fluff, no concrete stat completion dates for each item. Also, at the last meeting I attended, I asked each of you to make a site visit on Stetson Street. Can you raise your hands? How many did? Excellent. I also stated that I would be glad to walk with you, but I didn't receive a call from anyone. I'm sure you noticed the holes at both ends of the street. One is three or four inches deep. I'd be happy to show anybody a picture on an iPad at recess if you didn't see it. And also down towards the Broad Street end is probably 10 feet to 15 feet of frost heaps. And there's holes up at the other end as well. Again, number one, repaving and new curbs on Stetson Street. Please have the superintendent use some common sense and latitude in addressing the needs of Stetson Street. Cedar and School Street were in good shape compared to Stetson. It's deterioration from all the traffic, the trucks, no infrastructure maintenance. And however, Mr. Dutton also mentioned that due to the heavy use by the fire department, the school street was paved. This is a fallacy, as the fire department only travels a short distance to the center of town, and that street was fine. The fire department also travels on Pearl and Stetson. Number two, speed sign. I mentioned this back in February, to move it from one pole to another pole, so people coming down the street will see it right away versus going halfway down. Once they go halfway down, they're already starting to hit their brakes. So that was on February 22 at the town meeting. Still not moved. If it can't be moved, I'd be happy to do it for you. Number three, the speed table. This would not generate any noise at all if installed properly, such as those installed by the Lynch Construction Company. I would be happy to get quotes for you. And I did send some of you pitches, just to show you what they look like. It's not a speed bump, it's a speed table. Makes people slow down, go over it, and continue slowly, hopefully. We don't get noise from those. We get more noise from the daily commuter and freight trains blowing their whistles multiple times at each crossing, which is above the approved noise level requirements. Other towns don't allow this noise, nor the rate of speed compared to Bridgewater. But that's been mentioned many times over the last 10 years. Also, this would cut down back to the bump. This would also not cause the town contracted plows any additional wear and tear whatsoever. Their wear and tear is caused by them hitting the curbs, and you've seen the curbs, how badly they are. And that's from the plows. Number four, no parking signs during the day. Mr. Dutton mentioned in the letter that Stetson is a very wide street, and parking on Stetson has a very calming effect. I had something else mentioned, but I crossed it off, because I didn't think it was appropriate. But this, which decreases the speeding. We completely disagree at this being the case. It's not an issue. With the lodging houses closed and daytime students not parking on Stetson, it is now even more of a drag strip with speeding cars and motorcycles. When no cars or trucks are not parking on Stetson, it has a drag strip effect racing up the hill from Broad and down the hill from Pearl. With cars and trucks parking on both sides, it is hazardous trying to back out of one's driveway. On June 7, I was passed trying to back out of my driveway. The same day, I was passed trying to enter my driveway. When parking on both sides, one has a very difficult time trying to exit, as mentioned, as the vehicles are straddling the double faded line as they come up and go down the street. This is also a lane violation, which has never been enforced by the police department, but it is a safety hazard. Now, during the construction of the new laundromat, most days you only have room for one vehicle entering and exiting at the same time, because sometimes you have trucks parked right by the gate. You can't go on the street because of the fence. You have people parking on the sidewalk by the print shop, which happens every day, even without the construction. And there's no police on duty. Number five, elimination of truck traffic. Mr. Dutton mentioned that the DOT has restrictions. Can you show me the DOT letter removing the signage of no trucks allowed on Stetson Street and Pearl Street that we once had in place? When are the new signs going up? And finally, residential dumpsters. I've sent a few of you some nice candid shots, mattresses, et cetera, which is still there. When are there going to be enclosed procedures for residential large dumpsters being implemented on Stetson Street and other areas in the town of Bridgewater? And how will it be enforced? It seems like this could be a Channel 7 investigative team visit, maybe in order. But I'm thinking along those lines. But thank you, and we look forward to receiving the stat and completion dates for these common sense items. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Candido. Other public forum? Seeing none, I would like to entertain a motion to take Item F out of order, as we have some hearings and we're behind schedule on those.
So moved. I'll take Item F out of order.
Made by Mr. Gallagher.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. George. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous? Okay. We'll open the hearing on Order 02017022, loan order, Massachusetts Clean Water Trust for High Street Water Tower. And it is 7:40 as we do this. So, Mr. Dutton, would you like to give a brief presentation?
Mr. President, this $6,760,000 of financing through the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust is actually for the High Street Water Treatment Facility, which will be constructed adjacent to the High Street wells and is designed to filter those wells and provide more, provide less dirty water, so to speak. So it'll clean out the sediments and the minerals and provide clear water instead of the cloudy water that currently exists.
Thank you. Are there any general questions from the public on this? Any public speaking in favor or in opposition? Questions from town councilors? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing, and I'll entertain a motion to approve the loan order.
Motion to approve.
Made by Mr. Wood, seconded by Mr. Haley. I would just note that both the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees recommended this unanimously. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Wood?
Only that many in the town have complained of dirty water, and this has been a long-term approach to the problem, and it seems to be a good solution. And so I think we should move forward. Thank you.
Mr. Haley?
No.
Other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous? Thank you.
We will call them.
Oh, okay. We close. All right. Ms. Holmberg can call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Colombo?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against.
Okay. The hour is 7:42, and we will open the hearing on undesignated fund balance transfers. We have two orders in front of us, Order 02017031 and Order 02017032. The first being water and sewer transfer of undesignated fund balance, and the second being general fund transfer, undesignated balance. And we will take each separately, so let's talk about the water and sewer first. Mr. Dutton.
Mr. President, this order is designed to take the quote-unquote "free cash" or the undesignated fund balance in both the water and sewer departments and transfer it to a special purpose account. It essentially allows us to appropriate that money after the end of the fiscal year in the event that there is some emergency need for some major repairs, and we need to access that money. So this is something that we'll do on a routine basis, something that you'll see a little later on, is being proposed for the Community Preservation Fund. It's been being proposed here, and it's actually being proposed as part of the allocation of our general fund free cash. So it simply allows us, when, for instance, one of the rotating RBCs down at the sewer plant needs to be replaced, that there's a source of funding to be able to do that during the period of time where we wouldn't otherwise be able to spend free cash.
Thank you. Are there any general questions from the public on this? Are there any public speaking in favor or against? Questions from town councilors? Mr. Colombo?
I'm just curious. Mr. Dutton, are there any specific needs you might anticipate using these funds for in the near future?
The only thing we could possibly anticipate at this point is what I just mentioned, the RBC rotating batch reactor. It's a, there are, I believe, 14 of them at the sewer plant, and they're about 20-some-odd, approaching 30 years old. We've replaced a number of them, as you might recall, but that's the only thing I could think of at this point.
Right. Thank you.
Other questions from town councilors? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing. I'll entertain a motion to approve the transfer.
So moved.
Made by Mr. George, seconded by Mr. Wood. Mr. George, discussion?
Nope.
Mr. Wood?
Only that it was approved by the Finance Committee and the Budget and Finance Committee.
Unanimously, yes. Thank you. Other discussion from councilors? Seeing none. Ms. Holmberg, can you call the roll?
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Colombo?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Loesch?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against.
Thank you. And continuing under this hearing on undesignated fund balance transfers, we do have a general fund transfer of undesignated fund balances, which are, I will turn over to the town manager to explain.
Mr. President, this, what I alluded to just a second ago, this is the allocation of our free cash, or a good chunk of our free cash into a number of different funds that we can expend out of as necessary throughout the next fiscal year or beyond. It takes $2,240,966 and allocates that to, one, the Old Scotland Links estimated deficit for this fiscal year, the allocation for other employee liabilities, which is essentially sick buyback and sick time buyback, and for retirees, funds $1 million into stabilization. It funds $427, or almost $428,000 into capital stabilization fund, and then funds $100,000 into the OPEB fund.
Are there general questions from the public on this? Or a public speaking in favor or in opposition? Seeing none, we'll move on to questions from town councilors. Are there any questions from town councilors? Mr. Wood?
Just to the town manager, Mr. Dutton, you sent me the letter, but I don't think you sent it to everyone else regarding the amount for the golf course this year, plus the amount that we transferred in the budget process. So could you just speak about that? And then if everybody wants a copy of the letter, they can have--
Correct. If anybody wants a copy of the memo, it's an internal memo designed to document, I think Councilor Wood had mentioned, that it would be good to have some written documentation of the, what we are calling a loan to the golf course, both this fiscal year and next fiscal year. And the letter essentially documents that loan, which would be paid back to the general fund presumably in FY 19 and 20, once the bond for the construction of the golf course has been paid off, which is in FY 18. It happens to be, it happens to be August, I believe, or it might be July or August that we actually make the payment, but that's in FY 18. So we'll have to wait till FY 19 to reap the benefits and repay the general fund.
Other questions for the town manager? I'd just ask one, Mr. Dutton. You referred to an internal memo, but it's a public document if people want to see it, right?
Oh, absolutely.
Just want to make sure. Thank you. Any further discussion on this one? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing, and we will take a roll call vote. Ms. Holmberg? And this does require a two-thirds vote. Oh, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Wood, seconded by Mr. Haley.
Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Colombo?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against.
Thank you. Moving on, the time is now 7:49, and we will open the public hearing on Order 02017024, Capital Project expenditures. Mr. Dutton?
Mr. President, this is before you as essentially a separate capital order, in order for us to take advantages of a number of different end-of-year incentives. This is an order that it would expend $144,496 on the leasing of two electric vehicles, the installation of a charging station, payments on the sweeper vacuum truck, and offset the cost of, some of the cost of the Complete Streets program or the Complete Streets work that's going on right now. So again, it's $144,496, and is before you, so that we can take advantage of some, mostly some incentives before the end of the fiscal year.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Is there general questions from the public on this? Are there public speaking in favor or against? Seeing none, we'll go to questions from town councilors. Mr. Haley?
One question for the town manager. We discussed this. Will I be getting a Tesla that I could plug in for free?
You won't be getting the Tesla, but you'll be able to plug it in.
Other questions for the town manager? Mr. Gallagher?
Mr. President, through you, to the town manager. Just two questions. This is coming from a capital stabilization fund. Just to, for clarification, this is, this is not from the prison mitigation money, correct?
Correct.
And secondly, the capital stabilization fund, how much is in there now? And obviously, we're going to draw down 144.
Is this an additional $236,000 approximately, somebody transferred in, what can you see here before you add that to it? Ask about what you're at?
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions from councilors? Mr. Colombo?
Through you, Mr. President. Mr. Dutton, where are these incentive, two questions. Where are these incentives coming from? And, yeah, and secondly, a comment, I think it would behoove the council to see these, you note that these requests are, have been excerpted from the full five-year capital plan. I would just urge you to, it'd be good to see the whole plan before we kind of excerpt parts of it to get our priorities straight. So in the future, it'd be good to get the whole plan first. So just that question about where these incentives come from.
The electric vehicle and the charging station incentives come from the Department of Energy and Environmental Affairs. On the charging station, we got a full rebate, as far as I know, we got a full rebate on the $5,500, and then we get a partial, partial incentive on the electric vehicles. But that expires, as I say, June 30. The Complete Streets program, that is one that is supposed to be completed by the end of the fiscal year. We actually extended it, but we extended it under FY 17 provisions, so that we're going to pay for it under FY 17 rules. And state funding offsets about $50,000 of the cost, so we're on the hook for $20,000. And then the vacuum truck is a payment that has to be made in fiscal 17, and we're adding in fiscal 18, just so we can be done with that expense. And, I'm sorry.
So, you mentioned there's, we'll be getting, there'll be getting a rebate towards that $5,500. Does that just say that money will be going back into the capital stabilization?
It would be, if it doesn't go directly back, it would come back to you as a vote to put it back into stabilization, capital stabilization. Correct.
All right. Thanks.
Other questions from the town council on this one? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing. Is there a motion to approve? Made by Mr. Souza?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Haley. Are there amendments? Seeing none. Discussion, Mr. Souza?
No.
Mr. Haley? Other discussion from councilors? Seeing none. Ms. Holmberg, do you call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Colombo?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against.
Okay. We'll go back to our regular order of business and move on to appointments. The first appointment before us this evening is for Town Attorney Jason Rollins. I'll turn it over to the town manager.
Mr. President, Mr. Rollins' information is in your packet, and he's certainly got a track record with us, been with the town for probably five or six years as associate town attorney, and I would encourage you to ratify.
Is there a motion?
A motion to appoint?
Made by Mr. Gallagher, seconded by Mr. Souza. Mr. Gallagher, discussion?
No. Congratulations. Whatever.
Mr. Souza, discussion? Other discussion? Mr. Colombo?
I have great confidence in Mr. Rollins, so I welcome the appointment and will be supporting it.
Thank you. Other discussion? Seeing none, we'll have a voice vote on this one. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Congratulations, Mr. Rollins. Moving on to Zoning Board of Appeals. I'll turn it over to the town manager.
Mr. President, Gerald Chipman has submitted an application, gone through the Citizen Advisory Committee, and has been recommended by them, so I put him forward to fill the upcoming vacancy that'll be created on the Zoning Board of Appeals with the departure of Andy Bissonette.
Is there a motion? Made by Mr. Souza?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gallagher. Discussion, Mr. Souza?
Welcome.
Mr. Gallagher?
Is he here? No, I've been just, you know, glad to see, you know, Jerry Chipman continuing to serve the community. He's been involved on many committees over the last, since I've been here anyway, since 1995, and I'm glad he wants to continue to serve.
Okay. Further discussion? Mr. Colombo?
I just have a question for the town manager. Will this be as a full member or an associate member?
He would be moving in as a full member, and we're still looking for associate members, if anybody's interested.
Thank you.
Other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Moving on, Cable Advisory Committee, Eric Christensen. Mr. Dutton?
Mr. President, Mr. Christensen actually attended a council meeting, and the urging of the council, applied for a vacancy on a board committee, in this case, the Cable Advisory Committee. And he went through the Citizen Advisory Board process, and I would encourage you to ratify.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to appoint.
Second.
Made by Mr. Gallagher, seconded by Mr. Haley. Mr. Gallagher, discussion?
I'm glad to see Eric Christensen stepping to the plate, another South Drive resident getting involved.
Mr. Haley?
What does this put the head count now?
We now have two members.
And if I can follow up? And what is the full count supposed to be? I think it's five?
Three members.
Three members. So we're short one.
Three members. So we're short one.
Oh, now we have a quorum.
Yeah.
Okay. Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Moving on, it's my understanding, Mr. Dutton, that Mr. Weiss has withdrawn his name for consideration for the Finance Committee?
That is my understanding as well, unfortunately.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Weiss, for stepping up, and, you know, hopefully, there's something that fits your schedule better. Moving on, Treasure Collector, Mr. Dutton?
Mr. President, Diane Lawless's information is in your packet for consideration, and I will defer to the council on the direction you would like to go.
Is there a motion?
Mr. President, if I could make a motion that we do not appoint a treasure collector this evening?
I'll second for discussion. Mr. Gallagher?
Mr. President, I've done some due diligence on this, and I have also met with the town manager and assistant manager on a regular basis and talked about this and other things, but when it came to this, I talked, I was, I'm disappointed in the process. I was, I asked questions relative to how many people applied for the position, and I was told how many applied. I asked if I could see those resumes, and I was told I couldn't, and I understand that. Then I asked, well, was there a weaning down process? Were there finalists? And I was told that there wasn't. Or could I see the resumes of those that you called in for interviews? And I was told I couldn't. So I think the process was flawed, and I've done some other due diligence as well. I think that in a normal process, when we're hiring a position at this level or even higher, they usually, in most communities, there are finalists. I've been finalist, a finalist before. Some of you probably have as well. In the public sector, you are told that you will become a finalist and that your name will become public. And at that point, you can, you can back out and say, well, wait a minute, I don't, I don't want it, I don't want to go forward anymore, and you back out. And you back out. So I can understand not wanting to reveal those initially that applied. But I would have liked to have seen resumes of those that were considered, but not finalists. And perhaps that's something we need to look at as a council down the road. Maybe as a council, in the way our charter reads, it's, it's none of our business who applies or who the finalists are. But when a final name becomes for us, before us, and we hear things and so forth, we, we need to show the citizens that we're doing our own little due diligence into a process like this. So that's my discussion, Mr. President.
So, having made the second, I get to talk second. I understand your points, Mr. Gallagher, but the charter does contemplate that the town manager gets to choose his staff or her staff. And then we hold the town manager accountable. So that's kind of where I'm coming from, from it. But that's, that's just my point of view. And, you know, I appreciate your, your position.
Mr. President?
George.
I'd like to make some comments as well. I, I agree with Mr. Gallagher. You do bring up a fair point, that the town manager does have the ability to appoint. But I think what Mr. Gallagher said, and I agree, particularly in this position, some people would say it's more important than the town manager. And that if we're going to have a open discussion around candidates, I think we do need to have names brought up, the ability to maybe ask some questions, things of that nature. To that point, the, the town manager can bring a candidate up in front of us. But we do have the ability to ratify. So I would agree with Mr. Gallagher's stance on this right now.
Further discussion? Mr. Colombo.
I've done some due diligence in reviewing the proposed appointee and come to the conclusion that this individual would not be a, a good fit for Bridgewater at this time, especially given the relative instability we've had within the finance and treasurer's office. So I will not be supporting, I guess I'll be supporting the motion, but not the, the appointment.
Further discussion? Seeing none, this is a voice vote. All in favor say, all in favor of the motion to not appoint, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Carries six to two.
I didn't hear any opposed.
I said no. I heard Mr. Haley say no. He was, he was coughing or something at the time. Okay, so, Mr. Dutton, I think you heard loud and clear from the council about certain things that we feel need to be done better.
Mr. President, can I?
Moving on, we're, we're done with that discussion. Thank you.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
I'm wondering if a rejection of an affirmative vote would have been more conclusive.
Would you, would you like to make that motion?
Yes, I guess I'm concerned that, that not-
Okay, so, so then make a motion to appoint her.
I make a motion to appoint Ms. Lawless.
I'll second that because I'm going to vote yes. All right, we've all had the discussion. We don't need to have any more. So this is the motion to appoint. If you want to appoint, say yes. If you want to vote, if you do not want to appoint, say no. All those in favor of appointing Ms. Lawless, say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
No.
Again, it's six to two. Thank you, Mr. Colombo.
Yeah, all right, thanks.
No discussion, no discussion.
That was, that was fine. Thank you, appreciate it. There are no, we have license transactions now. Bridgewater Citizens Club, extension of hours. It's petition 2017-017. And the Citizens Club has petitioned to extend the hours of operation on Sunday to open and serve alcoholic beverages at 10:00 a.m. And a permit is required, and everything seems to be in order. Is there a motion to approve? Made by Mr. Wood?
Second.
By Mr. George. Mr. Wood, discussion?
Although I've never personally been in the Citizens Club, I understand their petition quite well. The state moved years ago to allow Sunday morning brunches with mimosas and other selections. And that's what they're trying to do. So I encourage this.
Mr. George.
No, I would agree. Well-run. I've been there a couple times. Don't see any issues with the application.
Further discussion? Mr. Haley.
I, as a member, will enjoy my Sundays.
Thank you, Mr. Haley. Other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Okay, moving, moving on to petition 2017-018, granting of a common victual license to St. Mary and St. Carolos Corporation, DBA Chessman's Pizza. And they will operate from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. in their 16th Central Square location. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved to approve.
Made by Mr. Wood, seconded by Mr. Haley. Discussion, Mr. Wood.
So in the application, it's till 2:00 a.m., and I'm supporting the 2:00 a.m. opening. This is the Chessman's, I believe it's going to be in the same corner where Chessman's had been. And it's now shuttered for a while. I, I think that a food store, especially pizza, serving a town that has a large college population helps the town by staying open until 2:00 a.m. There's no liquor at the establishment. Hopefully, there will be never any liquor at the establishment. I think the 2:00 a.m. gives, gives folks that are walking around town, you know, their final destination, get something to eat, rest for a while, and go home. And I encourage everyone to support the 2:00 a.m. Everything else looks in, in order here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haley. Other discussion from the town council? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Moving on, we have no presentations. Moving on, we have the town manager's report. Mr. Dutton, a brief town manager's report.
A brief town manager's report is in order. The old Colony Planning Council I have mentioned, but I want to remind people, is working with the Community and Economic Development Department to update the town's housing production plan, which was last updated in 2012. And it is scheduled, the project itself is scheduled for completion mid to late summer. And OCPC is developing a first draft in anticipation of a, of a public meeting later in July this next month. Just so the public knows, DHCD asks, and actually basically requires that plans be updated and reviewed every five years in order to provide the, the, the help that those plans give towns when, when dealing with hostile 40Bs certainly. And also just as we try to update and upgrade our affordable housing stock. Also, work on the Complete Streets pedestrian safety study does continue. It should be completed by September, which I had mentioned a little earlier. We will use the study to qualify and quantify a grant funding application to the state. This has been done by other towns fairly consistently, and this is in very recent years. And so we're looking to, to do the same thing, to get some grant funding, to do pieces of, or at least the prioritized pieces of the, of the Complete Streets program. A reminder that the Ducksboro 40B development hearing continues on July 26, right here in the council chambers. Again, that's the Ducksboro 40B, which is requesting or applying for 150 single-family homes off of Curve Street. On the 40B note, Claremont is expecting to receive its site eligibility approval for the property near, its property near Lake Nip from Mass Housing. And soon after that, Claremont would then be submitting an application for a 40B development to the zoning board of appeals. We have had, and we continue to have, some good productive conversations with Claremont as part of a more comprehensive discussion. The overall use of their property and what the town ideally would like to see out there. And I'm sure those conversations will, will continue. The Bridgewater State University Art Department, I'm sure it's not called the Art Department. I'm sure it's called something else. But the Art Department is spearheading a rollout of fiberglass bears that will appear around town. And they are looking for individual or corporate sponsors to, to essentially purchase those bears. So anybody that's interested can contact Jay Block, the collection manager at BSU, for more information. And I don't have a phone number for him, but I'm sure it's easily found on the internet. Bit of good news, the town's been awarded a significant grant, Green Communities Grant of $176,000. This is, I believe, the third year that we have been able to benefit from the Green Communities Program in a pretty significant grant. Lisa Sullivan, Dr. Hunt, and Kim Williams went up to Boston to accept the, the award last week. And we will put that money to very good use. We were awarded the grant based upon our application for the, application of funds for certain specific projects throughout town that, that help us reduce our energy costs and, and in many different areas. So that is really good news for us. The average award statewide, keep in mind, there are much larger communities that are part of this, as well as smaller communities. But the average award was in the 150,000 range. So we, we did beat the average and stacked up against other towns. I think we've done very, very well on that grant. The drainage installation on Cherry Street has been completed. And the roadway will be ground and repaved in the spring of 2018. And the reason for that is that once the drainage has been installed, it takes a good while and several seasons for the street to settle back to its compacted state. So that it, it will be repaved as soon as that happens. There are other paving jobs around town that have been done, but not completed. We've had some fairly inclement weather that's not conducive to paving in May and June. So the contractor will be coming back to complete some of the other paving projects that have been started, but not finished yet. Speaking of started but not finished, the fountain project in front of this building should be coming to an end, and the fountain should be on within a couple of days. We are now just awaiting the replacement of the, of an ultraviolet bulb and a lens, which go right in the, in the fountain itself. So I do want to give Rob Cabral, our plumbing inspector, a great deal of credit. He's really coordinated this, this, sort of the tail end of this project very well. And he's absolutely adamant that he's going to get the thing up and running before the July 4th weekend. So I, I trust he will. We have welcomed a BSU Masters of Public Administration candidate as our Parks and Rec summer intern. Sounds like he's, gets to spend a lot of time outside, but no. Anthony Hebert will be working on establishing a lot of, looking at a lot of ownership records to make sure that we have ownership of, of the parcels and pieces that we consider parks in town. And making sure that we have properly restricted those properties as parklands. He's also helping us develop a realistic plan to implement the new open space and rec plan. So he's, he's very capable, and I, I trust he's going to give us some quality work by the end of the summer. So that's, that's a bit of good news. You may have noticed that we have hung the proclamation that the council approved probably over a year ago now. But we had it enlarged, and it is the first piece of wall decoration, I'll call it. But it graces the lobby downstairs. And I think from my, my perspective, it really serves as sort of a permanent reminder of what the town's values are and the importance of civil and respectful discourse. And so I'm very happy to, to be a part of that and very happy to see it hanging in the lobby. I think that's a tremendous addition to this building and to the town. Oops. Let's see. You'll notice the house on Bedford Street has now been demolished. That was a pretty pricey demolition because the house was laced with asbestos. There's a long tail to that house that's been very instructive for our, our finance department. And picking and choosing and figuring out when to put properties into tax title and when to foreclose, the right of redemption, has some importance because we don't, in the future, want to take houses that are laced with asbestos. Rather, you want to figure out a way to get taxes paid on those. But that's, that's a lesson learned. But the house has been removed, and the Affordable Housing Trust right now is reviewing the property for, for the potential affordable housing use. So we will keep you updated on that. Congrats. On grant funding, also goes to the fire department. They secured a $57,000 grant for wellness and fitness program. It sounds, often when we talk about wellness and fitness, it sounds like it's, you know, sort of a bunch of fluff. But quite honestly, if you look at our health insurance rates and, and you are striving to keep claims down and keep these folks on the job and not out on, on leave or on disability, $57,000 to, to do something in terms of wellness is, is well worth it. So obviously designed to reduce injury and overtime rates. Residents should have gotten a letter by now. And if not, they will be shortly just announcing the water and sewer rate increases that I've been discussing for quite a while now. The letter should explain a little bit about why the rate increases are necessary. And I know the water and sewer departments have been receiving a number of calls or fielding a number of calls relative to the increases. And at least so far, I think people have, have obviously not been happy about increases, but at least understand why, why they're necessary and why they will be necessary. So. Very quickly, we did have the first meeting of the Mitchell School Building Committee yesterday. And really, not, not anything more than a bit of an organizational meeting. But, but that project will be off and going, and I imagine going fairly quickly over the next several months. So I'll certainly keep you updated on that. I have heard word from Vale Syme, who has served for a number of years on our SAVE committee, that she has resigned her position due to personal reasons. So I do want to extend certainly some public thanks to her for her commitment to making sure that seniors in the community could, could qualify for some tax relief by, by doing certain projects for the town. We've, we've certainly got a robust SAVE program, and I think it's helped us do things like early voting and, and some, some tasks in certain offices around town that are, that are critical. So my thanks to her, and I certainly wish her well. Finally, we did talk, and I don't want anybody to think that we forgot. We did talk about some DPW presentation and a senior center presentation and having Mr. Diorno in to talk a little bit about community and economic development initiatives going on right now. We will schedule, tentatively are scheduling those for July 11th. This time of year, we have a lot of folks on vacation because they try to use the vacation they haven't had a chance to use before the end of the fiscal year. So, so we're working on a little bit of a short shift. But we should be back and ready to go. And we'll have at least a couple of those on your July 11th meeting. And that's what I have.
Thank you. Questions for the town manager?
Mr. President, I have a few.
Mr. George.
The senior center kitchen, is it done?
The senior center kitchen, this new sink is in. They actually did a great job putting it in. So the only, I think there are some punch list items. And there's some items that we are going to take care of that were not part of the original contract. So, screen door specifically.
So the punch list is the responsibility of the contractor, correct?
Correct.
So the contractor still has not fulfilled his obligation to finish the work?
I wouldn't say that. I just need to go, I need to go down there and make sure that all the things that were on the punch list were completed.
Okay. Well, in fairness, we've been asking for this for a while. You brought up Cherry Street, which is great. Totally understand the repaving. Do we have the ability to at least go in and do some patchwork on the holes that are in the street that, in my opinion, are a public safety issue?
Yes. And I'll, I'll ask Ron Ledoux to take a look and try to at least patch holes as they develop. Absolutely.
Okay. The third thing, I was reading some notes, and it looks like there was a, a company that was interested in developing- was interested in developing on Elm Street, doing a development that withdrew. Company's not satisfied with the timeliness of the approval and has decided to look elsewhere. Can you give us a little bit more clarity on that, please?
The company that was looking at a couple of different pieces of property on Elm Street was Coparts. Coparts is a company that essentially, my understanding is, purchases totaled vehicles and then sells them, resells them. So broken totaled vehicles come in, and they go out after, you know, a few days. And it's a very large company, they're a worldwide presence. They came looking for a southeast Massachusetts location. They went through, began to go through the planning board process, and I think they got a little discouraged by things that, or at least issues that the planning board was bringing up, and they pulled their application. That's the bad news. I think we do have some good alternatives in the works. It's very premature to, you know, talk about them, but I think there's some good alternatives that are coming down the pike.
Just for a note, I'm very concerned at the fact that we continue, it seems like we continuously have issues with businesses trying to come into Bridgewater, running into roadblocks, and going elsewhere. And even though we may have other businesses coming in after that, we have a reputation of being a very difficult town to do business with. We need to change that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. George. Other questions for the town manager? Mr. Colomotis?
Mr. Dutton, can you go into, I'd like to address Mr. George's point. Can you go into some of the concerns the planning board had about the Coparts application?
I'm just sort of going second, off some secondhand information, but I think there were some environmental concerns as, you know, the use of that property. I think there were some stormwater drainage concerns. Obviously Elm Street's not a great spot for a lot, you know, good stormwater runoff. I think those, basically, I think those were the concerns of the planning board. I can certainly get you a more definitive answer.
Is it, I attended one of the planning board meetings, and it seemed that it was not an especially high value concern, that were not a whole lot of jobs, that they weren't going to build a big building, and there were some environmental concerns. So perhaps, this isn't the form, but I just wanted to kind of defend the planning board's actions and assert that they were looking after the town's best interests, and there wasn't, not a big loss, I guess. In terms of the complete streets process, will that process address some of Mr. Candido's concerns about some of the streets around the center of town being used as pass-throughs? Will that complete streets plan, policy include provisions for traffic calming in some of these cut-through streets around the center of town?
I think the general answer is yes. I can't tell you specifically which streets or how they would accommodate some traffic calming, but I think that's one of the components.
That's within the scope of the project.
Yes, oh, absolutely.
Great, thanks.
Other questions for the town manager? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Dutton. We'll move on. There are no discussions tonight. Committee reports, are there any committee chairs who would like to make a report this evening? Ms. Lush?
I just wanted to give an update on the charter, which is on the agenda tonight. The Charter Review Committee, see, this is, I'm changing our name. The Charter Review Committee and the Rules and Procedure Committee have spent some due diligence in reviewing all of the various changes and all the recommendations from the town manager, residents of the town, other councilors. And we feel like the product that we're presenting this evening for advertising has a lot of what we were looking to change and make some vast improvements to the charter. So I just encourage everyone to have a lively discussion at that time.
Thank you, Ms. Lush. Other committee reports. Mr. Wood.
I'll just reiterate what you're seeing in front of you on the budget side for the upcoming orders. So the Budget and Finance Committee was able to meet a few times and cover all these, and I don't think in these that we made any adjustments, but the Finance Committee was hampered by the fact that they couldn't get quorum a couple times. So these have been off the agenda for a couple meetings now, and they're finally here. I just wanted everybody to notice that I think on all of them, they're unanimously approved by both groups, so we should be able to move pretty quickly through them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Other committee reports. Seeing none.
Mr. President, a quick question to Mr. Wood. Are we full on the Finance Committee, or are we still looking for anybody?
If I may, I believe we're still looking for, I had, Jason was, was an appointment I brought forward, but he had a scheduling issue. So we still have a town council appointment. I believe there was an appointment either from town clerk or town manager that came on a meeting ago or so, and is there still one open seat, two open seats?
As of the end of the fiscal year, we're going to lose Ken Bernard, who has opted not to fill a position. I think that's my appointment, as much as I tried to keep him on.
Okay, so do we need, I guess my question is, do we need someone right now?
We need a few bodies right now.
A few bodies right now, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Go out and beat the bushes. Other committee reports. Seeing none. Okay, moving on. Legislation for action, Order 02017025, rescind senior center trust of portion of 0215018 relevant to the senior center trust fund. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Made by Mr. Wood.
Second.
Second by Mr. Haley. Mr. Wood, any discussion?
Maybe if we could just have the town manager remind everybody why we're rescinding an item and not just voting for it.
Thank you. This is, most, many of these are largely housekeeping, the recommendation, the auditors. This, at one point, the, in back in fiscal year 15, the council had voted a capital plan which included $60,000 for the Council on Aging project, and that obviously was not intended to be an appropriation, so we need to rescind it. It has nothing to do with the amounts that were voted to fund the projects down there.
Mr. Haley? Any other discussion? Mr. Gallagher?
I guess my question through you, Mr. President, through the town manager is, back in the day, that a lot of you will remember, the Hunt School was sold, and a portion, if not all, the proceeds, some proceeds of the sale of the Hunt School went to create this senior center trust fund for the purposes of using those monies to upkeep the senior center. Is this trust fund now not going to exist?
No, it still exists. The amount-
Once we vote, will it not exist anymore? I guess the question.
No, no. Vote has nothing to do with the trust.
Okay, so the money is coming, the 97,300, 97,300 is being taken from where?
The Elder Affairs Commission voted to take that out of the Hunt Fund, Hunt School Fund. So that money did come out of the Hunt School Fund. The $60,000 is being rescinded because it was voted as part of an overall capital plan with no funding source.
So where's the $97,000 going? It says it's being taken from fund, but doesn't say where it's going.
To fund the renovations. That's, that was the cost of the renovations of the senior center.
Okay, so then what will be the balance of the senior center trust fund after this project? Do we know?
It's somewhere in the neighborhood of 170, 150 to 170,000.
Okay.
Would be the balance.
Thank you.
Other discussion? Seeing none. This requires a roll call vote. Ms. Holmberg?
Mrs. Lush?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbon?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Colomotis?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Aid in favor, not against?
Thank you. Moving on to Order 2017026, reduce and rescind and reduce sewer line, re-line appropriation that Order 2012016 appropriating just over $5 million to re-line sewer main lines, including incidental costs, is thereby reduced to 2.4 and change million. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Made by Mr. Wood.
Second.
Second by Mr. Haley. Mr. Wood, do you want to defer to the town manager?
Sure. This is very simply reducing the appropriation to the amount that we actually spent. Quite often, I say, when the council approves an appropriation, I often say that we only will only spend what the project takes, or will only borrow what it takes to do the project. This is one of those instances. The town council way back in 2012 voted 5,070,500 to re-line the sewer lines. The actual project only cost 2,454,650.
Mr. Wood? Anything further? Mr. Haley? Other discussion? Seeing none. Ms. Holmberg?
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Colomotis?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbon?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Aid in favor, not against?
Thank you. Moving on to Order 2017027, CPA funds that we are moving some money around. You can read it in your order, I won't-
Motion to approve.
Made by Mr. Wood.
Second.
Second by Mr. Haley. Mr. Wood, would you like to defer to the town manager?
Yes, please.
Mr. Dutton? Thank you, Mr. President. This, this order does require an amendment. You'll see in your packet down the last paragraph, the amendment requires the word change and then also the number, which is not reflected in the one that you got in your packet, but I think is reflected in the memo, the very last number of 550,000 is actually, should be 1,200,000, and that is actually taking money from the undesignated fund balance and applying it to the special purpose fund, much as we just did with water and sewer, and similar to what we did with general funds. So it preserves the CPA's opportunity to recommend appropriation from their, what would otherwise be their undesignated fund balance, but it has to be put into a special purpose fund in order to do that. So again, will end up being a standard practice as we move forward.
Mr. Wood, would you like to offer an amendment?
I will, as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Wood, discussion? Mr. Haley?
No.
Further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all in favor of the amendment?
Excuse me. Do all the numbers add up?
Yes, Mr. George, sorry. What's that?
Do all the numbers add up? We've got moving parts here. This is going to add up to 1,200,000.
We'll put, we'll put Mr. Solomonti on the, on the hot seat for that one. Do all the numbers add up?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you sure?
He's sure. We've had other things come in front, and the numbers didn't add up, so I don't think it's a-
No, no, I thought you might have, I thought you might have done some quick math over there.
If I could, Mr. President, I just want to, I think Counselor George is, asked a good question. The numbers do add up, but the 1,200,000 isn't the total.
Right, and that's the reason why I asked the question.
Yeah.
Okay. Right, as long as the amendment adds up to 1,200,000, I'm fine. Get out my handy dandy calculator if you give me a minute.
No, 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 I think, I think the whole point is to amend the 550 at the bottom to 1.2 million. And that's moving, that's an additional appropriation out of and into.
Right, that essentially takes a bunch of their cash that they're sitting on and moves it into a special purpose fund that's available for recommendation, appropriation during the period where we otherwise couldn't, couldn't spend free cash.
And I understand that. Like I said, I just want the order to be accurate with what the supporting documentation says. So.
It is.
If I may-
Mr. Wood?
I won't do, but maybe the town manager can read the exact amendment for us, just to make sure of the wording.
I will. If you bear with me, I'll read the last paragraph of the CPC reserve account, essentially the CPC budget, Order 201707, 027. The last paragraph should read, and further, "To appropriate from community preservation undesignated fund balance the sum of 1,200,000 for CPC funds designated for a special purpose."
1,200,000. Okay, is there any further questions on the amendment? Seeing none, all in favor of the amendment, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, thank you. Moving on to the main motion, further discussion, Mr. Wood?
None.
Mr. Haley?
No.
Other discussion? Seeing none. Ms. Holmberg?
Mrs. Lush?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Gay?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbon?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher? Yes.
Mr. Colomotis?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Aid in favor, not against?
Thank you. Moving on to Order 2017028, general fund year-end transfer adjustments. There are a whole bunch of adjustments here between accounts that ran a surplus and accounts that need some money. I'll bother going through them all for you, you can read them. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Made by Mr. Gallagher, seconded by Mr. George. Mr. Gallagher, would you like to defer to the town manager, or would you like to speak first?
Nope, I think they all add up.
Mr. Dutton?
I'll confirm, they all add up. This is, this is probably a much larger list than you will ever see again, but again, at the recommendation, the auditors, and also the finance director, we want to make sure that we're as transparent as possible about year-end transfers. Next year, the law has changed somewhat, so that the need for many of these year-end transfers will not exist, but they are here for your vote. Nothing is, nothing is abnormal, I don't believe. Again, it's probably more than you will ever see again, it's probably more than we've seen in years past, but not, nothing out of the ordinary. Happy to answer questions.
Mr. George? Any further comments?
No.
Other discussion? Mr. Wood?
Just that, when we were in committee, and we spent quite a bit of time walking through each of these line items, and I do appreciate the transparency of this year's move, because it's very clear which funds things are coming from, going to, and hopefully, maybe not as complex next year, but hopefully we continue the practice. Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none. This requires a roll call vote. Ms. Holmberg?
Did you amend it?
Yeah, yeah, we voted to amend, and we voted yes, yeah.
We didn't amend it.
Oh, we didn't?
No.
All in favor of the amendment?
There's no amendment.
Oh, no, that's-
That was the last one.
Yeah, that was the last one. Keep moving. Just keep what Mr. Gallagher says. You did this better than me.
Is that an amended document?
Actually, if I could, I think, I think the council clerk is correct, although you probably don't see it in color in front of you, there are yellow items that are amended from the first time.
Okay, so I'll take a motion to amend as indicated.
So moved.
Made by Mr. George, seconded by Mr. Souza. Mr. George, you want to-
No discussion.
Mr. Souza?
No discussion.
Any other discussion? Mr. Wood?
This is why we have to have a functioning finance committee, because it's been a week since we saw this, and I don't see yellow on this, but there were amendments, and now I recall that, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Amendment?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Now we can move to the main motion, further discussion on the main motion? Seeing none. Ms. Holmberg, thank you for catching us.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Colomotis?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbon?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mrs. Lush?
Yes.
Aid in favor, not against?
Thank you. Moving on to Order Transfer 02017029, Community Preservation Transfer Year-End Transfer Adjustments, Moving From CPA Reserve Budgeted to Academy Building Renovations Interest Payment. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Made by Mr. Wood, seconded by Mr. George. Mr. Wood, would you like to defer to the town manager, or do you want to speak?
Town manager can address this.
Okay, Mr. Dutton?
Mr. President, this is really just a timing issue. When we received our first debt schedules from our financial advisors, it showed interest payments on this bill, well, this project would first come up, I believe, in July or August. We did, when it was all- We did, when it was all completed, we had, it turned out we had an interest payment to make in June, so that's what this is. It's not additional money, it's just a timing issue.
Thank you. Mr. Wood?
Nothing further.
Mr. George?
Nothing.
Other discussion? Seeing none, I don't believe this needs an amendment, I don't see any yellow here. Ms. Holmberg?
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbon?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against.
Thank you. Moving on to Order Transfer 02017030, water and sewer transfer adjustments, again, moving funds from places that have money to places that need money, approximately $3,400. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded by Mr. Wood, seconded by Mr. Haley. Mr. Wood?
Question, I'll turn it over to the town manager, actually, just a procedural question. So we had, under the hearings, a water and sewer transfer of undesignated fund balance, but this one falls under legislation for action. I'm not sure of the difference, I just wanted clarification on that.
The other one was an allocation, basically, think of it as an allocation of free cash. This one is a transfer of funds within the budget.
Thank you.
Mr. Haley? Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Colomotis?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Fitzgibbon?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against.
Thank you. Moving on to Order Transfer 02017033, general fund transfer contractual bargaining adjustments. There's a whole bunch of money coming out from various accounts and moving into various accounts. I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Made by Mr. George.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Souza. Mr. George, do you want to ask any questions, or do you want to turn it over to the town manager?
Turn it over to the town manager.
All right, Mr. Dutton?
Thank you, Mr. President. This one is, this transfer funds the collective bargaining agreements for FY17. The, in FY16, while we were developing the FY17 budget, we put away funds in order to pay for these, so this is just distributing those funds through the various departments.
Thank you. Mr. George, anything further?
No.
Mr. Souza?
No.
Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbon?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Colomotis?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against.
Thank you. Moving on to one of our favorites, Order 2017035, employee sick leave buyback liability transfers. We have some money set aside for a bunch of folks who are retiring and have sick leave buyback. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Made by Mr. Haley. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Gallagher. Mr. Haley, do you want to talk, or do you want to defer to the town manager?
I will defer to the town manager.
Mr. Dutton?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is probably not our favorite topic, but it is one that we do have to contend with, employee sick leave buyback. As I think most of the counselors know, over the course of many years, we had, by contract, offered buyback, sick leave buyback upon retirement, and this is now coming home to us, so we've got a number of retirements coming up, and a number of some sizable obligations to pay, some not quite so sizable. So this distributes the money that you set aside in a prior order out to those folks that either have or will retire shortly. So most of these are fairly accurate, but there may be some minor changes here or there, but for the most part, this is what we're looking at for this fiscal year.
Mr. Haley?
No.
Mr. Gallagher?
No.
Mr. George?
Mr. President, through you to the town manager, on a look-forward basis, do we have an idea of what we're going to need to allocate down the road for sick leave buyback?
The good news is that we've been able to limit or eliminate sick leave buyback in all of our contracts. In terms of dollar amounts, it's hard. Yes, the finance director's done some work to do a projection of where we think we're going to be years out, but it's obviously difficult, because we're just basing that on sort of a track record of when, you know, how much sick leave people have used during the course of their employment. But I think our outstanding liability is closer, I don't know if Tony wants to admit or take a guess, but it's a sick leave liability over a million.
Yes, if you were to add an additional, she said, add an additional 500 to this.
Yeah.
I think that would put us off the next six or seven years.
Six or seven years? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Holmberg?
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Colomotis?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbon?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against.
Moving on to Order 02017036, acceptance of a gift. We always like it when people give money. It's a little bit less than we just spent on that last order, but that's okay. It's a gift from the Bridgewater Police Association to help fund the renovation at the World War One Memorial. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Made by Mr. George, seconded by Mrs. Loesch. Mr. George, discussion?
Thank you to the Bridgewater Police Association for a very generous donation.
Ms. Loesch?
I second that.
Further discussion? I just want to again recognize Mr. Gallagher's hard work on getting that done. He was a driving force behind that, I know. Seeing no further discussion, we will take a roll call vote. Ms. Holmberg?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbon?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Colomotis?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against.
Moving on to old business, Order 2016027, acceptance of changes to the Bridgewater Home Rule Charter. This needs to be, this needs to be voted on with amendments and then sent to advertising this evening.
Mr. President, could I, I apologize, I think we skipped one transfer, 2017034.
No, you're right, thank you, Mr. Haley. Looks very similar. Then we'll go back and finish this one up. Order 2017034, general fund CBA.
Move to approve.
CBA retroactive settlement transfer.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Made by Mr. Gallagher, seconded by Mr. Souza. Mr. Gallagher, discussion?
No discussion, refer to the town manager if he has a comment.
This simply funds the retroactive payments for those contracts, collective bargaining contracts that have finally settled for prior year, prior to this year, 2017, 2016, essentially.
Ms. Holmberg?
Mr. George?
Yes.
Colomotis?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbon?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against.
Okay, moving on to Order 2016027, accept changes to Bridgewater's Home Rule Charter. This came through the Charter Review Committee, and then went to the Rules and Procedures Committee. We've had discussions here at the council level, and gone back to the Rules and Procedures Committee. There are several amendments that need to be accepted and put to advertising, if that's the will of the committee tonight, today. So, Ms. Loesch, is it your motion to accept?
Yes.
Mr. Wood, is it your second?
Second.
Okay. Is it your motion to amend, Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
And Mr. Wood, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so I'll turn it over to Ms. Loesch to explain the amendments.
So there are a number of amendments that are going through tonight that are available online for everyone to read and see. The high-level overview is that the Rules and Procedure Committee took many of the recommendations from the Charter Review Committee that proposed, I think roughly now two and a half to three years ago. We've had debates, we've had hearings, so a lot of the cleanup of scribner's errors to TWO have been changed. We also made a number of additions as their recommendation to the stipend, the recommendation to add some additional mass general law verbiage into our charter, as well as the appointment of a town clerk. We did not take some of their major modifications of combining different districts. We kept some of the composition from some of the different committees, i.e. the FinCom Committee. So there are a number of things that we heard loud and clear from all different folks, and we have made the appropriate recommendations per our discussions with the town and amongst ourselves. So, Mr. Wood, or Mr. Fitzgibbon, if you want to add?
That's an excellent summary.
Okay, so now, what we're discussing right now is the amendments that have been proposed, and I believe you all received and had a chance to look at, I hope? Okay, so, discussion on the amendment.
On the amendments.
On the amendments.
Plural, right.
Yeah.
So the process from this going forward is, I'm just talking and asking a question at the same time, Mr. President, to you, to Counselor Loesch. This, so we vote to accept the changes, so we're kind of agreeing, we're accepting them, and we'll, the amendments first. So is there going to be, is this the time to propose that there be separate questions for certain issues, or is that gone by the table?
I defer to the town attorney on that one, or Ms. Loesch has the answer.
Are you recommending one question when it goes to the ballot, or is this going to come back to us from advertising for another vote?
Correct.
Okay.
And we can defer to the town.
That's accurate. We have an opportunity, again, to discuss how many questions there actually are on the ballot relative to the separate amendments.
After it comes back from advertising?
So.
That's a totally separate vote.
So, just so I'm clear, Mr. Rollins, and then I'll get to you, Mr. Colomotis, we're accepting all of the changes and saying, we want to put these in front of the people. We could take every TWO, number two turns into the word TWO, and put it as a separate question, should we like, afterwards. But, I mean, we know what the big issues are that people may want to split out.
Correct, you could do that. There's a couple of different statutes that actually cover how that's done, that we don't need to really get into at this point, but in essence, you can vote on this as one amendment, where essentially, unfortunately for me, the statute says that the town council actually drafts the summary of that amendment, and it appears to be a pretty long one, if it's one question, or several questions, or two questions, or whatever you decide. So you will have the opportunity to weigh in on that, once we get to that stage, absolutely.
Thank you.
But we're not there yet.
Mr. Colomotis?
I'm still unclear. If we send it to advertising as it's written, we can then break it out into separate questions for the referendum?
Correct.
And not have to re-advertise. Okay, I just want to be absolutely clear. And I have one more question. Can I ask Mrs. Loesch to maybe describe the five most significant amendments to the charter?
Sure. It was, I did a couple of them already, right? So the stipend, the town clerk, the changing of postings, so we went from 30 days to 72 hours. I'm trying to think of my top five.
Some folks might think eliminating term limits is a big one.
Yes, eliminating term limits could be considered a fourth, and another big change. Mr. Wood?
We discussed probably a couple months ago about the FinCom, because of the trouble with composition, and so there were a couple recommendations that we treat it as the admin code and create it as an ordinance, so it's voted on by the council how to construct the FinCom, and so the charter revision, the amendment that's being voted on tonight, changes the language, instead of constructed of 333 and 9, it changes it to as determined by the town council.
And just to follow up on Mr. Wood's comment, essentially, that comports the Finance Committee with all other committees in the town, essentially being appointed slash ratified by the town council and set in the administrative code, as opposed to being set in the charter and very hard to change, and that was the thought process behind it. Other discussion?
Great, thanks.
Mr. Gallagher?
So if we, as a council, do not want something to be amended, can we vote tonight to strike in a particular amendment from going to advertising?
Absolutely, but this is the point, this is the point where, you know, you need to say, we need to say as a council, this is what we're putting in front of the town.
Right.
And then, when it comes back, we can say, how many ways do we want to slice and dice it as far as a menu goes? But if we don't want to put it in front of the town, then we should have an amendment to change whatever is not palatable.
So I'd like to make, I'm certainly open to people discussing this more, but I'd like to make.
You can make a motion to amend the amendment, yes.
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to amend the amendment to strike the amendment of an appointed town clerk.
Made by Mr. Gallagher, seconded by Mr. Souza, to return the town clerk to pre-Rules and Procedures, pre-Charter Review Committee, the way the charter reads today, is that correct? Okay, all right. So, further discussion, Mr. Gallagher?
I think we've had a lot of discussion about the town clerk, in particularly the salary, we had, we discussed in, in great detail, um, at the Budget and Finance Committee meeting, and, and here at the council meeting about a month ago during the budget process. And I think that, that we have heard from the town clerk particularly, and, and, and the, the role that the town clerk plays in a community, not just Bridgewater, in every community. And I, and I think that there's justification of keeping it elected, in my view. I think it works out very well. We have elections, and we draw our very low pools of candidates sometimes. Perhaps this is one position that may draw people to run, and, and I just think it should stay as an elected, uh, position. I don't hear a big groundswell in the community that it should be appointed. I'm not trying to take a vote away from the citizens to decide. They decided this a hundred and fifty years ago, um, and I, and I think that, uh, the charter originally, you know, put it in as, as appointed. And I'll admit that I was on the Charter Review Committee when the discussion about this came up, and we went back and forth for several, several hours, if not a couple of meetings, and the, um, long-term town clerk, Ron Adams, came in and gave his justification why it should be, um, elected. So, I've had a change of, and I even, during that discussion, I was like, I think it should stay elected, I, maybe it should go appointed, maybe it should stay elected, but I supported the, I supported my committee in, in putting it forward as appointed upon review. So, having served now for, as a councilman for two-plus years, I, I think that there, there's a lot to say of having an elected town clerk in our community. So, I'd like to see it stay elected, um, and if my motion passes, that would be great. If not, I certainly think that this should be a separate question when it comes back from advertising, simply because I do think that the Charter Review Committee, in addition to the Rules and Procedures Committee, had done a heck of a lot of work on a lot of good changes in the charter. I'd hate to see the whole thing fail over one issue that'll probably dominate the, um, the campaign, if you will, about this, our charter review, is why it should probably be separate if my motion doesn't pass. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Uh...
Point of clarification.
Right.
Um, I think if this amendment does pass, and we pass everything else, can it go to advertising, or does it have to go back to the Charter Review Committee? So, if, if...
I'll, I'll, I'll answer that, Mr. George. If Mr. Gallagher's motion to chain, to, to strike all the changes to the town clerk and remove it back to elected town clerk?
Yep.
Passes, we can vote to send it to advertising?
Okay.
Tonight, as amended.
Okay.
That's, that's the whole point of having the discussion as amended.
Thank you. That's all I need, okay.
Mr. Souza.
Yes, my conversation with a number of people in town, they feel the same way, that position represents the town people, and they would like to have a say in that person, because they feel the someone living in town who's the clerk, they know the town, they know the people, and we should have someone in that position who does that job, lives here, and knows the people.
Thank you, Mr. Souza. Further discussion on the amendment, Ms. Loesch.
Um, just to give additional context on why we have chosen to have it be appointed, to continue the recommendation of the original charter, that was when it was drafted seven years ago or so, um, the Charter Review Committee that met three years ago, and a lot of the documentation and the movement of other towns that have our form of government have moved to appointed people, appointed positions, there is nothing in the role that an appointed town clerk does, an elected town clerk doesn't do. So, some of the things I heard was, you know, they do different initiatives, they do Operation Santa, they do different things around town, and appointed town clerk could do those very same things, because those are initiatives of the person, not the role. The role is very, um, specific from Mass General Law of what the role is supposed to do. So, if someone is appointed, and they are in the role, there's laws and by, and guidelines and bylaws, if you will, that they have to follow. So, being appointed does not take any of that away, um, and they would still need to be, um, following the letter of the law and all the procedures that come with the role. So, I haven't heard a compelling argument, um, at least for me, to switch, because I feel like the person, no matter if they're appointed or elected, they're gonna be held to the same standard to do the same role. Um, the, the ease of the appointment helps the form of government that we have chosen to have in the town of Bridgewater, and this continues the, um, the formation of that by streamlining the appointment of a town clerk. While I do, um, love the fact that someone has to live in town, you get to know the person, I didn't know Merrily Hunt until she was elected, and I may not know the person after her personally. So, I think we need to, sometimes, and I know everyone knew Ron, I did not, unfortunately, but the role requires skill, and the role requires some, um, attention to detail and some professionalism and some training, that I think having a, a wider pool of the state of Massachusetts and beyond, to be able to pull people in and to serve the town of Bridgewater with those great qualifications is helpful. Instead of being, um, uh, tied to only, you know, the parameters of Bridgewater to find one person to do the role, we are opening ourselves up to getting other candidates, and if we get someone from the town of Bridgewater that is great, qualified, then they will be appointed. It's not a disqualification by any stretch of the imagination, just from, um, my perspective.
Mr. Wood? Thank you. So, on May twenty-third, everybody here on the council got the packet, uh, copied the packet that we discussed on the night of the twenty-second. On the night of the twenty-second, we had a public input session for the committee, and there were only a handful of people that were here. There, uh, Councilors Susan Gallagher were here, the Hunts were here, Sam Baumgarten, I always mispronounce his name, was here, um, and we were here. There, there wasn't a whole lot of other input. So, in the town manager, town council, form of government, it's contemplated that there will be two branches of government. One will be the executive, which is Mr. Dutton and his staff, and one will be the legislative. What I find when I hear from people, the, the discussion about the elected portion is more an emotional one. It's always been elected. Sixteen fifty-six is when we became incorporated. Back then, it was all farms. It, we didn't have really downtown. I wasn't here, obviously, but... My father may have been on my tour, but, um, you know, so, it, the farmers ran the town for a long time, and, and I've heard that, as a member of the town, you were required to go to town meeting and make decisions. And so, think about it. I mean, back in the seventeen hundreds, you had too many positions that you had to trust. You had to trust your treasurer-collector, who received the revenues and dispersed, you know, the expenses, and you had to trust your town clerk that kept track of all the documents. So, back then, elected was extremely important. You didn't want, I don't know if there were party affiliations or whatever, you didn't want one side of town selecting another, you wanted everybody in town to have a voice and say, this is the person we trust. When we moved into town manager, town council, what we've done is, we've said, the citizens are trusting us and, and interacting with us and causing us to either, um, you know, take action on a, on a issue that's in their particular area, and if they don't like what we're doing, they'll, they'll remove us, and if they do like us, they'll re-elect us. And we have significant power to manage the, the, the town, um, through the executive branch, through orders like you'll see tonight, the, the, the order on the trees is a good example. So, you know, there have been many discussions about trees on Broad Street, but it didn't happen. That order is one way we manage, the legislative branch manages the, the executive branch. In that packet from the twenty-third, that was in your email, you'll see that the functions of the town clerks are divided into eleven functional areas, and that wasn't my list, that was a list that was provided by the town clerk's office. Most of those items are mandated by the state. Many of those items are regulated by the state. All of those items have reporting of some sort, many, to the state. Um, so it's no longer about trust of the person in the office, it's about who is trained to handle the digital age, the record-keeping, the, um, sending and receiving of things to the state. And so, I, I understand the emotional piece of the elected, but if we go down that road, then we also have to consider town, county, town collector and town treasurer in a similar vein, because if we want an elected voice representing the town of Bridgewater, why wouldn't we make that an elected? And if we're talking about that position, why wouldn't we want our Board of Assessors to be completely independent and to be elected? And if we want them, why wouldn't we want our Board of Health to be elected and independent again? And suddenly, we're back into the town of, town form of government that we used to be, so we might as well revert back to selectmen and open town meeting, um, as a form of government. So, what I'm asking everybody to consider is that, um, I, I think we heard procedurally, we can make a decision later, uh, you know, how many questions, whether it's one or six or more on, on the ballot, but in the, in the town council, town manager, form of government, it contemplates a functional side and a legislative side, and I think we've achieved that except in this one, one area. And if, if we want to or decide to make it a resident, we can do that through an ordinance, if it's appointed. If we want to have a, you know, residence restriction, uh, if we want to make it an appointment for five years or three years or something like that, we can do that. There's, there's a lot of variability. The question came up, you know, isn't there the possibility of, you know, pressure on the job? And that's when I asked for the list. There's eleven functions, and, and I, I ask you to read through that presentation and look at those eleven functions, and ask yourself, would the town clerk, not this town clerk, but a town clerk violate any of those functions in the hopes of pleasing somebody, whether it's the town council or the town manager, depending on how the reporting goes? And I don't think so. I, I think that the functions are pretty clear, that the office staff does a great job. We are moving into a much more complex, um, mode as we move away from paper and into digital aspects, and things like elections and, and other activities run by the office have statutes that have to be complied with. So, there's not, really no choice in the office. So, I, I understand the emotional piece of it, um, but I, I think we have to finish the complete picture of the town manager, town council, form of government, that the original group, you know, spoke about, uh, the review committee addressed multiple times, that our committees addressed multiple times, and that many other people have talked about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. George.
Um, so, I, I will say on this, I started off supporting an appointed town clerk, um, but having multiple conversations with many people, including people in my district, I've changed my stance on that, not for an emotional issue, um, I think from a practical and a procedural issue, as well as autonomy. I, I actually see the value in a town clerk who's only answerable, answerable to the voters, not answerable to us directly, not answerable to the town manager. That does take a lot of time and effort and expertise, which I agree with, um, but from a factual perspective, we've had a long history of elected town clerks, and we've done pretty well, I would say. And I think that there are people that are still getting accustomed to our current form of government. Um, the good news is, um, from my perspective, I think I'm finally gonna get the video of the town meeting, that we had a passionate plea from the floor. That was the only item that was taken out and kept elected for a specific reason. The other ones were folded into the appointed position, and I think those have worked very well. So, I would agree with, you know, Counselor Gallagher in regards to, uh, supporting this motion to, um, keep the town clerk elected. Thank you.
Can I just ask a few questions?
Uh, Mr. Colomotis hasn't spoken yet, so let him go, then. Back to you, Mr. Gallagher.
Um, Mr. Wood referenced some of the previous positions that might be subject to, perhaps should be subject to an election. I think the town clerk position is unique in that it oversees elections, and I think that's really a vital concern and a position that requires absolute independence, as Mr. George alluded to. So, that is my, the reason, the rationale that, that compels me to support Mr. Gallagher's amendment or retain, keep this as an elected position.
Thank you. Ms. Loesch?
Um, I guess two follow-up questions to Mr. Colomotis and Mr. George. I think Mr. Adams was in the role for twenty years, so we, and Merrily Hunt has been in the role for the past two and a half. So, though we've had successful elections, we've elected two people in the past twenty-five years or so. So, I don't know if that's a, like, a good ratio, because we're looking at two people as opposed to having three years with the one person, five years with another, and seeing that variation of people fall into the role and see how they perform. And, Mr. Colomotis, as far as your role about being independent, with state guidelines clearly, um, there for the town clerk to follow, what pressure could any of us give this person to, um, affect an election outcome?
So, Miss, I'll let Mr. George respond, then Mr. Colomotis, then Mr. Gallagher. Mr. George?
It, it's a great point. I, I guess my response to that would be, um, every, every election, if the clerk was not doing his or her job, they would be voted out. Um, so if we have a clerk that's not doing the job, the, the people have the ability to vote that person out, instead of having go through a procedural process of having that person taken out of the, the position. So, in a way, we were fortunate, but it wasn't a lifetime appointment. Um, you know, Mr. Adams was up for election at the end of his term, same thing with Ms. Hunt, and I would expect that to move forward.
Mr. Colomotis?
Um, I think, to your question about, uh, pressure, um, as we've seen on the federal stage, pressure from a boss can be subtle and still powerful, so I think it doesn't, a boss doesn't need to express pressure overtly to, to exert that pressure. And I think, uh, uh, an underling, someone who's accountable to a boss can, and, you know, in their own mind anticipate what the boss would like to see and act, act as such, and, um, you don't have that with an elected position.
Thank you, Mr. Colomotis. Mr. Gallagher?
When the, um, Mr. President threw you to Chairman Loesch, when this went to you guys, Rules and Procedures Committee from the council through the Charter Review Committee, it, it, as far as the town clerk position is concerned, it, it went to you guys, um, or as an appointed position by the town council. Is that still your recommendation?
Ms. Loesch?
Or just appointed? You say appointed, but you haven't said the process. The process that we sent it to you guys to was by the town, town council. That's what the Charter Review Committee recommended. So, what's, is that still in, still in play?
Correct.
So, the appointment is by the town?
We understand your question.
Huh?
We understand your question. Let Ms. Loesch think about it for a second. I think we've had, what, a hundred meetings and thousands of revisions?
Yes, yes. Thousands of revisions might be right. So, you're asking if the town council is the appointing person, or appointing body for the town clerk?
Yes.
Because that was the original recommendation?
Right. Did you, does that, has that changed?
It hasn't.
Has not? Okay.
Mr. Wood?
Thank you again. Um, I wish Pete were coming back, but, um, so, so I sat with, um, a, a person close to Bridgewater politics for a long time, and who was at the meeting where, you know, we changed it, I say we, because it was, it was a vote in the town meeting, um, back to, back to elected. And we spent a great deal of time talking about the recall election, you know, many years ago, and whether or not Ron, Ron Adams' behavior was, was, um, changed because of pressure, because of no pressure, because he was elected, or whether it would have been changed because of pressure if he had been appointed by one or the other bodies that was involved in the debate about the recall. And it's, and it's pretty clear, and I think that the person I sat and had coffee with, although we agreed to disagree for the entire meeting, um, I, I think we both agreed on the point that because there were other parties involved in that, in that debate, Mr. Adams had no choice but to proceed with a recall election. There was clearly an opinion from the legal team to move forward, and eventually a judge said move forward. And, but Mr. Adams would have been, um, wrong if he had stopped the process, because that's what the statute says to do, is to continue with the process. And so, in the end, you know, the legal process managed that, but whether appointed or elected, Mr. Adams, uh, would have gone through the election, and if he didn't, he would have been wrong, um, and, and that sort of thing. The meeting on the twenty-second was an open meeting, and I'm not sure the minutes fully reflect this, but there was a self-disclosure by the town clerk at that meeting about an error that was made in the past several years and had to be corrected, and I never knew about the error. I'm not sure how significant it was, it's probably an easy administrative error, but it was self-disclosed as something that wasn't being told to anybody, including the town's populace. So, so, so to think that, you know, the town can make a, make a, a, a great choice, um, or to take action to remove someone that's not, not doing, you know, the right job, um, I think has, has a little bit of falsehood to it, because if the person in the elected office doesn't self-disclose and treat the issue fairly, then it's not gonna be known by, by the electorate, and that could influence things just as much. Again, I, I don't think there was a major issue here, I think it's correctable. I, I think that's the way, I mean, us and, you know, I manage people, people manage me, that's the way you do things in, in the business world, is you, you take corrective action, you don't take pun, you don't make punishment, you correct the action, you, you do the right reporting, and, and you move on from there, and, and you get the education that you need to, to, you know, carry on. And I think that's what was done in this case. So, so I'm wondering if, you know, if there had been nine, I don't like to say nine bosses, I think people are thinking that way. You know, we appoint the town clerk, and the town clerk is gonna work almost autonomously, or should work as autonomously as, as they do today. The point would be, can you find somebody that's qualified for a position? And we had that debate earlier during the appointment process, um, and can you put them in the job and get them trained, and, and they'll stay in the job as a trained person and carry on? And, and so, um, you know, hopefully, hopefully, I, I don't think that's gonna change anybody's mind, because I think everybody said, but I hope it, it gives points to ponder as we go forward.
Okay. Further discussion? Mr. Haley?
Do we not want to entrust the, uh, the great people of Bridgewater to make this decision?
I do.
Okay. Further discussion? Seeing none? Okay, so this is on the amendment to the amendment?
Mm-hmm.
To restore the original wording of the charter, removing the recommendation of the Rules and Procedures Committee and the Charter Review Committee to have the town clerk be appointed by the town council. Is that correct, Mr. Gallagher? I just wanted to make sure I was clear.
Yeah, it was good.
I was characterizing correctly. All right, so on that, on that amendment to amend, to change it back to the way it was, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No? I'll ask for a show of hands, all, all in favor? All opposed? All opposed? It's four to four. The motion fails. Moving back to the main question on the amendments. Ms. Loesch, do you have anything further on the other amendments or anything?
I do not.
Any other discussion on any other amendments, any other amendments to the amendments that we would like to look at? Seeing none, we'll ask for a voice vote on the amendments. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
All right. I'm going to ask for a show of hands. All those in favor of the amendments as written, hold their hand up. All those opposed? Okay, the amendment fails. I'm going to make a recommendation that we refer this back to the Rules and Procedures Committee and not continue with this, with, with moving toward advertising. So I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Loesch. Obviously, we're divided. Mr. Perry's not here to break the tie, so it makes no sense to move forward, voting on something that needs to be amended anyway.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay. All those in favor of referring back to the Rules and Procedures Committee signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you.
I just want to make a side note there, that we will meet again, and then it may not be ready for the July meeting, so it'll be ready for the August meeting, and then it will probably go up to legislators, so we're looking at probably not next April, but maybe something in November of 2018.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business. CPC Transfer Capital Project, Legion Field Lights, order 02017038, CPC Transfer Capital Project, Legion Field Lights. Is there a motion to send to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committee?
Some of.
Made by Mrs. Loesch, seconded by Mr. Wood. We're going to defer to the town manager to discuss this a little bit.
Mr. President, this is a recommendation by the, a request by the town, and a recommendation by the Community Preservation Committee to fund $231,000 to replace the lighting at Hayes and Lozaro Fields located at the Legion Field Complex.
Any questions for the town manager about this? Seeing none, all in favor of sending to the Budget and Finance?
Can we have further discussion?
I just asked that.
You asked a great question for the town manager.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
I have a comment to make. I'm disappointed that there are no other sources of funding listed. It's $231,000 from the CPA. And I know that it's a stated desire of the CPC that, that other funded, funding sources be added to the funding to, to leverage the CPA funds. We're going to go through CPA funds all too fast unless we find alternative funding. So I don't know if it's too late to find alternative funding sources, but I would encourage the applicant to, to try to find some.
Thank you, Mr. Collin Bodas. Other general discussion? Mr. Wood.
I have a question on that subject then to the town manager, because, and we'll discuss this at length in committee, I'm sure, but the letter from Harry Bailey, who I think is currently the chair, makes a recommendation to go from the CPC, and he's not asking about other funding. Correct?
Correct, I believe.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or discussion about it? One in favor of sending to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committee, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Moving on. Order 2017039, Procure Services for Zoning Consultant. Mr. Susan, do you want to make a motion to refer to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees? You get to talk first. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Wood. Mr. Susan.
We have spent a lot of tax dollars over the years for plans. Plans are sat on the shelves. I served on the Community and Economic Development Committee for a year, and very little conversation ever came up about these plans, although we were trying to talk about different things and what we could do. My big question also comes up with our Director of Economic Development for the town. He's also the planner for the town. I want to know what education and background he has for those two positions, that these people who we're paying $125,000 to, how it differs. Why can't our own people do it?
Those are all good questions, that I'm sure the committee will look into, and we can probably address when they come back to us. Mr. Collin Bodas.
I would just like to offer my opinion on, on that question. As the town manager has attested, our, our Community and Economic Development Director is, got a full plate, and this is quite a comprehensive project we'd be undertaking. And I think it's, our, our master plan, which was first created, I don't know, more than 12 years ago, 15 years ago, even at that point noted the rather convoluted plate, state of our zoning laws, and that the fact that they needed to be rationalized. I think the town would see tremendous return from the drafting of work, more comprehensive and consolidated zoning. So I think this would be money well spent, so I heartily recommend that we pass it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a discussion on referring to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees?
Quickly, if I could, yeah.
Mr. Gallagher.
You know, I agree that this, this money is not well spent. I disagree that the money is well spent, that it is not well spent. And we have report, look, we spent, I don't know how many meetings trying to get $15,000 to help the Strategic Planning Committee do their work, and now we want to do another study, a review of our zoning bylaws, and hire a consultant for, for a study that's going to probably come to us piecemeal. We just changed the zoning last fall, over the winter, for Elm Street. And we did that through the recommendations of the proper channels. That's, and the citizens got involved, and the people that live in that area got involved, and we hashed it out and, and pushed, and got something through. I, I just don't, I don't see the need for this, and it's going to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committee simply for financial purposes, not for professional critique as to whether this money should be spent or not. It probably should be referred to the Economic and Development Committee, or, or another committee in town, or another committee from this council. So to, to refer it to the Budget and Finance Committee simply for financial purposes, when this is more of a technical, a technical report that's going to need to get done, it just doesn't make any sense.
So, Mr. Gallagher, if I might, I don't necessarily disagree with that. If we rescinded that motion and sent it to the Community and Economic Development Committee first, it would still need to go back to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees once it came out of there as a, as a financial matter. Is that more along the lines what you're thinking?
I, I don't want to spend the money. I think we're, we're spending too much money in this town. We are spending everything, and, you know, Councilor Wood, and I'll, I'll ask you, I mean, I'll mention your name on this one, when we wanted to spend $15,000 on the consultant for the, to help us with the strategic planning, you talked about the efforts that have been made, and rightfully so, about bringing our reserves up, and that the auditors say we need this and we need that. You made a big deal about that, and we're only wanting to spend $15,000. Now we want to spend $125,000, and now that discussion is not happening. Maybe you feel this, this is more? I don't know. I don't know what your view is on this, but, but I think we, we talked about, and you even brought it up to Councilor Wood, that all, we have all these reports sitting on a table, sitting in a bookcase somewhere, and we're not utilizing them. And here's another one that we're going to do. We're going to spend up to $125,000. I don't know if it really will cost that much, maybe it will, but we're spending too much money on studies in this community, when we do have expertise in our community.
Mr. Wood.
And we just, we just adjusted many, if not all of our professional staff to a salary level, that, you know, perhaps somebody that's working in this town could do this for us.
Mr. Wood.
Thanks. Yeah, the, the placement of this, obviously, it's a financial matter on the, on the cover, but it's, it's really more than that. And I am concerned that we're getting a lot of chefs, you know, in the kitchen. So we did, we did reach an agreement to fund a strategic planner, and that was done through the strategic planning. And my concern isn't, is, is about the money, but my concern is that, so we've got, you know, a, a director here in town who may take one direction, a strategic planner who may recommend another one, someone who's going to come in with their own ideas about zoning that may not match either one of those, and there's other, other ideas about downtown revitalization, everything. I, I think we need to find a way, maybe through that strategic planner, come up, say, these are the directions you need to go with the work, and then figure out who does the work, and maybe this is one of those pieces, and maybe, you know, the department, the department's another piece, but yeah, I, I agree with you.
Mr. Collin Bodas.
Mr. Fitzgibbons, let me answer the question that Mr. Gallagher failed to answer, and that is, I do think it makes sense to send it to both Community and Economic Development and Budget and Finance. So perhaps CEDC first, and then Budget and Finance as required by our charter. To Mr. Wood's point about, well, there was another question about, concern about that we're just going to create more reports that are going to sit on the shelves, and I just want to cite the language here in this order, and that is, where, one, one element of the scope of this project is to rewrite the town's zoning ordinances. So it's not just a study, it's something concrete, it's, it's a new zoning map, it's new zoning ordinances. And to Mr. Wood's point about, and this is actually an opinion that the former building inspector expressed about having an outside person come in and kind of tell us what to do, and rob us of our town identity, and, and to that point, I would, I would point to some of the public input sessions that Jennifer Goldson, who was the Community Preservation Planner, held, and her general approach, and this is something that's practiced throughout the state and country, and that is to have a, an expert, an outside expert come into the town, and the first step in that process is to elicit from the populace, from the citizens, what do you want? What do you value? What do you want to see? And then it's the expert's role to then take that input and provide solutions that can be put in place to achieve those goals. So I, that's really important to stress, that we do need the, we do need the expertise. I'm not sure Mr. De Ione has the expertise to do this. He's not a licensed planner. I'm not sure he has the time. I don't think he has the time to do this. I think it'd be money well spent, and it depends on how the process is done. And if we do it right, and we, we get citizen input, then I think that we develop, we'd come out with results that would serve the town well. So I'm fully in support of this.
Thank you, Mr. Collin Bodas. Mr. Susan.
Yes. That was very interesting when you just said that the, Mr. De Ione isn't a licensed planner. He was given the position, given a nice salary raise. What I think, my own personal opinion is, we have enough people right here in town, people serving on some committees. Just sending it back to that one committee, I was there, I don't think it's going to do us any good, that it's going to task things around and send it back. I think what we need is to look at, you got your building official, who was for the town for many years, you got your current official, who just came from the next town over, so it's not that he's coming from way out of state and doesn't know the area, okay? You have some very qualified people on your planning board. You have some realtors in the area who deal with both residential and commercial, who can tell you more about what type of commercial people wanting to come to town, why they would come to town, what would attract them to town. Don't forget, we're looking at a goal of 20% of our taxes coming in from business. We're at, what, 12-something? You've got a long way to go. And just sitting back and putting this thing off and off and off, and, I mean, I was told at a conversation to town manager that even if we start this today, it could be 10 to 12 months before anything begins to be implemented. And I think we should step back a little bit, put this committee together, pull all these people together, and, and definitely include myself on that committee, and we would come back with something. Okay? Now, if you come back with a base to go with, like say, oh, this expert's going to come into town and going to look at different people who want to come in and talk to them and tell them what they want, what is this committee going to do? They're going to take a real, deep, honest look at what we're doing, where we're going, and how we're going to get there. Then if all that information comes back in, and the council and other people figure that, well, it's good, but maybe it's not enough, then let's decide where we're going at the next step. But I think that's where we should go, instead of putting up $125,000, we start a committee.
Okay. Is there any discussion, more discussion on referring it to the committee?
Present.
Good discussion about, one second, Mr. George, and then I'll get to you. We've had a good discussion about the merits of the issue, which is not what referring to committees is usually about, but that's fine. I'm going to remind everyone when this comes back, whenever it comes back, that we've had all this discussion before, and if you don't make new points, I won't let you make the old points again. Mr. George.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I, I don't argue or doubt the need, as Mr. Collin Bodas has pointed out, in regards to the study itself. My issue with this, even coming back from committee, is the economics around it. $125,000 is, is a pretty significant chunk of change. I think we've got other priorities in this town that we need to earmark funds for before we address zoning, my personal opinion. We have Mr. Candido in here, once a month, asking about his street. We've got other streets, we've got other projects out there. I, I am not dismissing the need for this. I'm, I'm totally against the timing of it right now. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Haley. Mr. Haley hasn't spoken yet.
Excuse me, but this isn't the committee. Excuse me.
Speak into the microphone so people can hear you.
So not a comment about the committee, comment about the, the actual proposed order. Perhaps when we discuss the multitude of reasons of conjectures why we can't attract businesses and, and certain types of industry here, is because we have poor zoning. We have not just had this one rezoning and this overlay added just in this past year, but year on, year on, year, we get this shuffling of zoning, and I, I think we might have to have somebody from outside really take a look at that. Are our group of professionals and our group of concerned citizens on other committees doing the right thing? Do they have the right information? Are they moving forward in the right manner?
Thank you. Mr. Collin Bodas.
First, Mr. President, I appreciate your indulgence on this conversation. I think it's useful to have these conversations ahead of time, so people, committees to which legislation is, is assigned can have an informed discussion. To that point, I, perhaps we could ask the town manager about what value he sees in this order.
Mr. Dutton.
Since I proposed the expenditure, I, I think I'd have to agree with Councilor Haley. I think we, it's been a long time coming that we do a comprehensive review of our zoning. We don't have the ex, quite frankly, the level I expect of review of this, and the, the quality of product that, that we would expect to get at the end of this process is not something that I think we have internally. I think Counselor Susan's right, that, that we would form a committee, we would have folks, obviously, from the committee there to, to, to be able to articulate what we do want, but I think, I think the point, the broader point is that we really want to modernize our zoning. We want to make it simple, we want to make it streamlined, so that we can be an attractive place for, for businesses. When, when a business comes to a town, we wouldn't even know it, because what they do is they go online and they look at all our zoning, they look at how complex a permitting process they're, they're going to expect, and then they make a decision about whether to reach out to the town or not. So really, zoning is the first, in, in many ways, is the first introduction that a potential business has to a town, and I think we need to, we need to really do a more comprehensive look, instead of piecemealing it, as I think somebody mentioned, so that we can... piecemealing it, as I think somebody mentioned, so that we can present to the council a complete rewrite of, of what we've got. That doesn't mean zoning is going to change everywhere, but I, I think we need to have a, a really hard look at how we can make it much more efficient, clean, and, and clear out any of those contradictory provisions that are sort of laced throughout, throughout our current zoning. So just my opinion.
Okay. Do you have something new to add, Mr. Gallagher?
Sure.
I'll decide that.
Through you, Mr. President, to the town manager, if I may. Could, could you give me an example, or any of my colleagues, give me an example of a section of town right now that is keeping businesses away because it's not zoned properly for what they want to do? We heard earlier today of the planning board, Mr. Counselor George brought up, a, a business that wanted to come to Bridgewater, that probably, I think it was zoned properly, but they just didn't like the business. It wasn't, they got frustrated with the process. It wasn't about the zoning, it was about the process. So can anybody give me an example of a business that has been turned down or walked away because it wasn't zoned properly?
Mr. Dutton.
I could go back, I could go back and, you know, look at the people that have reached out to us over, over the last few years, but I think, I think my point is that, I mean, to some extent you don't know what you're missing because you never will know because they'll, you know, and this is, this is quantifiable. Businesses will tell you, they come in and they look at, at what your ordinances are, your zoning ordinances and your general ordinances, and, you know, if, if it looks too difficult, as we know from, from the exercise we went through a few years ago, what's most important to a business isn't necessarily how much they pay in taxes and all that, it's, it's the time that they can get to up and running. It's the, the time, the time it takes them to go through a permitting process and the expense.
Mr. Colombo.
One last point. I think private capital does not mind zoning that's strict and very prescriptive, but one thing private capital wants is predictability. And there's a whole lot of ambiguity in our zoning ordinances. And so you remove that and we'll get a whole lot more interest.
Thank you. Mr. Wood.
I, I'd actually like to see the conversation about this merged with the strategic planning that's going on. So I, I respect the economic development piece. I think if we're going to forget the numbers and forget the Budget and Finance Committee, I, I would like to recommend moving this over to Strategic Planning Group Committee for a discussion of how it fits in with what the strategic planner is attempting to do and what the strategic plan of the town should be. You know, Mr. Sousa brings up a point about elevating the commercial properties to 20%, but we as a council have never stated that formally. It's been stated informally a couple times by audience members, maybe by one or two counselors, but we've never set that as a goal. So I'd like to maybe have the Strategic Planning Group, you know, identify things like that, work on this, see what the needs are, work with the town manager, town, town economic group and figure out what the actual need is here, along with our strategic plan.
Okay, so would you withdraw your motion to send to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees?
Withdraw my motion.
Withdraw your motion to do that. You withdraw your second. You'd make a motion to?
Send it to Strategic Planning.
Seconded by Mr. Haley. Anything further on that?
Nothing.
You've made a good talk. Mr. Haley?
No, I completely agree.
Okay, so we're talking about moving it to the Strategic Planning Committee and trying to come up with a more comprehensive plan according to Mr. Wood. Discussion on that. Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Good discussion. Appreciate it. Order 2017040, creation and distribution of an informational postcard. Mr. Wood. Make a motion to do what?
Good question.
Have a first reading?
I make a motion, have the first reading and to, since I didn't put the date on there, to strike the word "date" from the order.
Okay. And is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Wood, do you want to talk about this?
Yeah, so we talked last time, we had a good discussion about, you know, getting out to the, the folks around town. I know in the past, you know, I get a, I get a, you know, Patriots card or Red Sox card that goes up on my, you know, magnet, magnet spot at home and, and it's easy to refer to. I remember years ago the town having this, and so I put together what I thought was a, was a majority of the information that gets somebody to the town. And really the spirit of this came from a friend of mine who was trying to count, contact Counselor Loesch, and he couldn't find her email even though it seemed like it was on the website. But those people that may not go to the website or whatever, need, just need a reminder how to get, contact us, how to contact town manager's office, how to contact police and fire business lines, how to contact the town clerk's office for records, that sort of thing. This was as much information as I could fit on a five-by-six postcard. I imagine the other side could have a town seal and, you know, to the residents of. The post office has a bulk rate for mailing. I, I've heard others doing it where you basically mail to every resident within 02324 for a set value. I would suggest that maybe we, there's no funding on this, as you can see, but I would suggest that maybe since we do have students at BP, maybe we leverage their printing office, but they're out of school right now, so maybe another suggestion would be to use, leverage the printing office down at the university at cost, not, not for free, not a gift, but at cost, and to get the postcards made and then get them out the door to, to various folks.
Anything further? Mr. Colombo.
I think it's a great idea and I appreciate it, Mr. Wood. I have just two comments and I wouldn't make them in the form of a formal amendment, but I know we, the town has a Facebook page. I guess it would make sense to add that. I don't know if we have a Twitter account. If we do, we should add that. And I'm also wondering if there's some way-
Add the Bridgewater Police Twitter. I know that.
Right. For those few remaining residents who don't use email, I'm wondering if, how they might be instructed to contact-
Well, that's why the number at the top is the big number.
Right, but I guess explicitly, if you, perhaps I'm looking for explicit language. You know, if you want to talk to a counselor on the phone, contact the town clerk, the council clerk or some such thing. I don't know if that's workable.
But I'm hoping the 0919 number can get to any place in town.
Yeah, okay, sure.
Anything further? We'll take this as a first reading. Take, take it home. If you have amendments, bring them back next time and go from there. Appreciate that. Lastly, on the work for the evening, order 2017041, removal and replacement of dead trees in downtown area. Mr. Sousa, do you want to make a motion to have this be a first reading or do you want to send it somewhere?
We'll move.
First reading? Okay.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Wood. Mr. Sousa, any further discussion?
Oh, I've talked about trees until I'm dead over it.
Okay. Mr. Wood.
Only, only a piece of informational things. We were at Tree City USA at one point, so I called my mother who's been the garden club since she moved back to Bridgewater, and she couldn't remember when and, and it's been a long time, probably 15 years since we got that designation. I don't think this'll restore that designation, but at least it gets us in the right start and it, and it satisfies making the town a little more attractive.
Mr. Sousa.
That's the whole point of it. When you drive into a town, you go down its main street and every third tree is dead, what a reflection on the town. I'm not going to say anymore.
Thank you, Mr. Sousa. Anything further? Seeing none. Again, read it. Bring back any amendments at the next meeting and we can move on from there. Citizens' comments. Seeing none. Council comments. We'll start with Mr. George.
I hope everybody has a happy and healthy July 4th weekend, I guess, even though there's a day in between. I want to also give a lot of, a lot of shout out, kudos to the 4th of July Committee. They have done tremendous amount of yeoman's work and I think more and more communities are actually getting rid of 4th of July fireworks and it's, it's good to see, my understanding is we'll have them again. So I appreciate that. So that's it for me.
Mr. Colombo.
Nothing tonight. Thanks.
Mr. Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few things this evening. I want to, I want to start out by saying when we started this meeting tonight, it was, it was probably the first time in my, my history of serving as either a selectman or a councilman that I was opposed to an appointment by either a town administrator or a town, or a town manager in this case. And it isn't something that I, I did lightheartedly, it was, it was with a lot of thought. So however the process goes forward, I can only say this in my comments, is that I hope that there's another advertisement that goes out and that perhaps a caveat could be put in the advertisement that current applicants are being considered and we seek additional ones. And I say that only because this process took 10 months. It was in August of 16 that an advertisement went out and we brought in a consultant and did a very, who everybody loved and still loves and was hoping to bring that person on full-time, but I don't think that was in, in play. So I think the opportunity, perhaps during that window, we might have lost some other candidates that might have put their name in. And now we are in competition with some surrounding towns that are currently looking for treasure collectors as well. So it might even be harder to find another pool of people. So the advert, my opinion is the advertisement might go out with current applicants, may still be considered, if that's a possibility. That's only my, my, my suggestion. I want to thank those that came to talk to me at the Bridgewater Bagel Shop a few weeks ago during my coffee. I had a few people to sit down with to talk about some issues of the day. And that myself, along with Counselors Haley and Counselors Wood, had a, had a good time at the neighbors' dinner last week and welcomed the Mandela Fellows who will be around town for the next six weeks and, and for their education. It was, there were very inspiring stories from each one of those students that we all listened to. It was a, it was a nice event. And on that note, I wish everyone a happy 4th of July and I'm hoping to see all my colleagues out there to help us with that banner we have that we can hold when we march down Broad Street and Main Street, not Main Street, Bedford Street on Tuesday, July 4th. Thank you.
Mr. Sousa.
I think we had a very productive evening, but I do want to wish everyone a happy holiday. Looking forward to joining you all on that morning. I have to get up to the mic. I'm the guy who complained about this, look, and I'm sitting way back. One of my constituents said, sometimes it seems like you people are in rocking chairs because you're up there talking and we can hear you and all of a sudden you go back. And that's just what I did. Anyway, that's enough for me tonight.
Mr. Haley.
I would like to reiterate what Counselor Gallagher had said. Sorry, I'm a little under the weather tonight. I'm sure you've all noticed. So the neighborhood dinner, one, I'm a, basically I'm on campus. I've moved twice and three times in Bridgewater, two times I've lived right here in the center and shared a common wall with the students at BSU. So I was happy to be there for, to talk with the president and staff about what's going on with the neighborhood. The most impressive were the, the Mandela Fellows. Just an amazing group of, of adults and I'm only 45, I can call them young adults because they are younger than me, but they're very impressive people that I signed up immediately for to be a, to be a peer with them and have more discussions because I feel that I may have much more to learn from them than they do me. Also, I just want to say, when we celebrate our independence, when we have all the great fun for the 4th of July weekend or midweek break, that we take care of ourselves and our town and the earth we walk on because I don't want to see all the trash blowing around after all of those great events. Just take care of our town.
Thank you, Mr. Haley. Mr. Wood.
Thank you. Speaking about the neighbors' dinner, they've been holding this for a number of years now. It started really when, I guess Park Street was hot item. This year there weren't that many hot items to discuss, but it is good to see some of the neighbors' dinner now and to continue that conversation. I hope they, they carry that on through, through the years and usually it's in June. And, and this year, like last year, as others have said, Mandela's Fellows were there. And if you think politics is difficult in Bridgewater, you know, we listen to, 25 of them have about two or three minutes apiece and, you know, most of them have lived through revolution or civil war, economic strife like you wouldn't believe. Most of them are now, are professionals, they have masters, they have PhDs, they're studying policy. They're all hoping to make a change in their country and it, it was a really interesting night. As far as the parade goes, I am dressing in a T-shirt, not a suit. So the, so hopefully the attire will be casual that morning. We're calling for good weather both in the morning and the afternoon. If it rains a little bit, you know, at lunchtime, that's fine. And there's another note here which I wrote five seconds ago and I can't read, so I guess I'm done.
Ms. Loesch.
Yeah, I don't know what that says. I want to thank the current volunteers that came up. I'm glad they heard our pleas, find friends and bring them along. I will be at the fourth and it's one of a special day because of the day that my husband lost his independence, so it's my wedding anniversary. And I can, you know, want to thank the fourth committee. They do a great job every year and I, I can't believe how much they do without, you know, any financial support from the town, just the townspeople, so I thank them very much.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone tonight for a couple of things. It was clear after some discussion that we didn't want to ratify as a, as a council the town manager's appointment for treasure collector and, and that's fine, that's our prerogative, that's our right and, and we'll move on and echoing Mr. Gallagher's sentiment, let's have a better process and, and keep it moving. And, you know, there was a divided vote on that. There was a divided vote on the amendments about the, the town charter and that's fine too. Everyone had positions that they defended well and defended with what they really believed and then, and that's what, that's what this is all about. So I thank you all for a good meeting in, in that regard, you know, and let's keep that up going forward. And then, of course, just wishing everyone a happy and safe 4th of July. Get out to the center of town for the parade and the activities down at the college and at, at Legion Field. It's a, it's a great time for family and neighbors, et cetera. So with that said, I don't believe we need an executive session, so I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Made by Mrs. Loesch.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. George. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?